Yes, let's pray. Chris Fowler, once again, is with your common and serves your common and serves your people. I hope you don't take this much of it for granted. Father, it's only you who put us in this spot, and so Father, we count as a blessing that we'll have this opportunity. Father, we ask you to do well as we go through the agenda tonight, Father, and Father, to be just to do the very best we can. Uh, oh, yes or no, or where we was on our marks, Father. But Father, this keeps the city of Arndale in mind, and we may not be seen. We ask the Lord Jesus Christ if we're going to make this connection in.
Let's lead him. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. We'll go ahead and do roll call. John, if you could start.
Yes.
Derek?
Here.
Bob Joe, President. Steve here, and myself, President. Um, we want to go ahead and go forward with the approval of the minutes. Does someone handle that one?
It looks like we've got two different sets. James, give back.
Please not back.
All right, I'll make a motion that the, uh, minutes from October 7th, 2020, a reading to be dispensed with, as each member has got a copy. Also, the minutes for October the 13th, uh, and it can be approved and submitted with one record. On October the 7th, on item number three, uh, in minutes, my vote, and it should be a yes.
Second. Fall in favor?
Aye.
That's a five. Perfect. Um, we're going to hold off on the, um, approval for current bills for payment. We're just going to go ahead and skip that momentarily, uh, so that we can review that document, uh, towards the end of the agenda. Moving forward, uh, looking for any professional or consultant reports at this time. Okay? Mayor, your reports are?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just a few comments. Uh, in a couple of weeks, this term, this administration will end, uh, and we are leaving the city in as good a financial shape and good shape otherwise as anyone can remember. Uh, I want to say thank you to the residents. I want to say thank you to, uh, my family, who's allowed me the time to serve this, to my board of directors and Habitat for Humanity, uh, to the residents and to the businesses, uh, for the opportunity to serve them. Uh, I want to say thank you to the council members, who chose to put the city first over the last four years and worked together. Special thanks to Council President Marino for his service over those years. I want to say thank you, and they're not here, but I want to say special thanks to the staff, particularly the department heads, uh, for the fine work that they did in providing leadership, uh, across the board. I thank them for their service. We were initially dealt some bad hands, as you all know, as you had to deal with at the beginning of this term, times with debts, with some obligations that were made that were not cared for, with Sam's Club leaving, and, uh, we took those on head-on, and we survived it. We not only survived it, but we flourished. Um, now, we've, since that time, we've accumulated over twenty new businesses, probably closer to thirty or thirty-five, um, new businesses in the city of Arndale, and, uh, we've gotten things on the right path. We've dealt with the debt and with the issues that plagued us from before, and we're on the right path. Um, we've got those new businesses. We have a park plan that has funding, not just a pie-in-the-sky plan, but a plan for Ruffner Park that can make it a family-friendly park. Um, we had a $3 million capital budget improvement plan this last year, first time that I ever remember having a plan like that. Uh, we were able to fund that fully. Uh, that's why we give a leaf truck this year, that's why we get new garbage trucks, replace some of the worn-out, uh, equipment. We had somewhere around a $3.5 million budget surplus, uh, last, this past year, that we just concluded in September the 30th, and those numbers will be coming, the exact numbers will be coming out. We have the, one of the hottest real estate markets in the metropolitan area, uh, the Tower Homes leading the way in that residentially. Uh, over the last three years, no other municipality in the metropolitan area had a higher appreciation average year-over-year the last three years, except for Homewood. Uh, we, we came in second on that. We have some things coming soon, uh, that are in the works. Uh, I want to say again, thank you to the CDA for their work. They're working on some projects with retail strategies, and we're excited about some of the things that are in the works, uh, that this, that will be completed over these next few years. I think you'll be excited about those, about what happens there. Uh, I wish the city of Arndale the very best. I live here. I have a business that operates here. I've been elected official here for the last four years. I have a vested interest at stake in seeing Arndale do well, and I wish the city of Arndale, uh, well and all of that. And then last, but not least, I want to say thank you to Patricia Birch. She threatened me if I said that, but she has been an integral cog in all of those things that have happened here, and I appreciate her assistance. And with that, I conclude with my report.
Thank you, sir. I do not see any department heads to deliver a report tonight. Moving on, um, come for our reports. Um, Steve, if you'd like to go ahead?
Just real quickly, Father, as the mayor did, I'd like to thank those who've liked me to this office and gave me their trust for this past four years. I thank my family, especially my wife, Lynn, for her support and extreme patience during the four-year term. And as I leave office, I'm turning it over to very capable hands for my district, and I look forward to seeing Cindy. I will not be a, um, fair-weather councilperson. I will be back attending meetings from time to time and be involved with the city as much as I can, so this is not the last people I'll see on me, and I'm looking forward to being on the other side of the equation. And just a caveat to the big council, please remember that this is the business meeting for the ci, the city. That's what it's intended to be. Please try to conduct business. And remember, the rule that I enforced was not mine about limiting the public speaking. It was an ordinance that previous council had put on the books and had never enforced. So it does allow, number one, for people to say what they want, but it also keeps us from being here till nine o'clock at night and potentially not give everybody a chance to be able to make a comment. So keep me that in mind. I wish them the best on their new, uh, four-year term, and looking forward to seeing what the city knows over the next four years. Thank y'all for being here tonight.
Thank you, Steve. Um, Terry?
I want to thank the residents of Arndale for allowing me to serve as council member for District Four for the last twelve years, and, uh, just to say that it was not any other reason other than financially that I decided to withdraw from the race this year. Uh, we, uh, my wife and I both said we'd go on social security, and I continued to work, and it would put us in a, uh, a mean tax bracket, so it, uh, costs more to continue than it would to, uh, to, uh, didn't tend to drop out at this time. Now, Mr. Box is, for the last two terms, has asked me, uh, when I got ready to drop out of the race, that he wanted to get in, so, uh, when my wife and I discussed our financial outlook, we, uh, called Mr. Box and told him to jump in, so that's, uh, the reason I quit, not because of anything that's happened here in Arndale, but it just became a financial situation for us. But I want to thank the, uh, people of Arndale for allowing me to serve these past twelve years. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Uh, John?
Uh, first of all, good evening, everyone. First of all, I just want to say, uh, thank you to Mayor Ann and, uh, Steve and Terry, uh, for their service, for serving Arndale. Um, we, we all understand what this seat means, you know, we understand what it's endured and the responsibility that it has. I just want to thank you for stepping out, you know, and getting into the race, and, uh, and I'm looking forward to the bottom sitting for the next four years, sitting up here and working, working together for the next four years. Well, thank you, everybody, for your service, as you have, Terry, twelve years, I believe.
Twelve years.
Twelve years, and I just want to say thank you for, for your service, and, and Steve, your hand to the mayor, for your service for the city of Arndale. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Bob Joe?
Yeah, I want to echo, um, Congressman Ladd mentioned, you know, I would like to thank, uh, thank the mayor and, and Steve and, and, uh, Terry for their service, because I know, um, being an elected official here in Arndale, it's not easy. Uh, so it takes a lot of work, a lot of tough skin, and, uh, I just appreciate them just serving, serving the city for as long as they did, and Terry, I think you and I, we worked together pretty long than anybody else.
Yeah.
But, um, but I just appreciate working with you. I do. I do. And, uh, just wish y'all good luck in your future job.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and, uh, I would like to echo the same. Uh, this is the first time I've ever served in this type of office, and, um, I, you know, learn a lot over those four years when you're serving, so Robert and Cindy, I'm looking forward to seeing how y'all grow, um, through, uh, y'all coming on, online here with us. Mayor, uh, it's been, it's been great. I always appreciate your, your input and, um, you know, just I've enjoyed working with you. I've learned some things from you. And then Terry, um, same thing goes, man. I know I've come after you with questions and things like that. You've been a resource to me at times, uh, so your experience will definitely be missed. I'm sure we'll have to reach out to you from time to time to get some historical input and some things. Steve, it's been a true pleasure, and, um, I just look forward to seeing you around. I know you're going to keep us, keep us straight or follow us out one of the two, so appreciate you for that. And, uh, as far as everybody coming online, James, I'm looking forward to working with you, and then, as mentioned, Robert and Cindy, looking forward to it as well. I'm looking forward to another good, four solid, awesome years of growth and opportunity. That being said, um, now it is time for any reports from board or non-council committees. I know we've got some representatives here, but I didn't know if that wanted to hold for a while. All right? Uh, it's time to go ahead and, before we approve the agenda, I just wanted to reach out, um, real quick and see if we want to go ahead, for planning purposes, set our first actual working meeting, uh, in November. Obviously, with the, uh, with the swearing-in, uh, meeting that will be happening on that Monday, the national election will be on Tuesday, uh, the third, so we've got options of the fourth and the fifth. Uh, we could easily decide that on Monday, the second, but I figured for planning purposes, we could go ahead and knock that out tonight, if that's everybody's pleasure. Typically, the Wednesday is the default date when we can't meet on Tuesday, uh, so I've heard from several of y'all that, uh, that Wednesday is, is the fourth is good. Uh, James, would that be, um, acceptable to you? Okay. And Robert, I think you already said that. Cindy, would that be acceptable for you as well? So before we approve the agi, uh, agenda, I would like to see if someone would, um, would be willing to put that on there when the time comes. Um, that being said...
Item number six.
Yep.
Present's five, there's a couple of other things we need to consider.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. So item number one is new business, and Mayor, that's got your name on it. I know you brought this up to us a few weeks back and introduced it to us, uh, so I'd appreciate if you just kind of give us another recap and let us know who we have with us tonight.
Yeah, you all, uh, met these folks, uh, council meeting two meetings ago, I believe it was, and I've represented this promotion industry from Arndale Company, and if you guys want to come forward, uh, I thought I was going to be presenting and, uh, take a moment, uh, refresh the memory on the presentation there. I know they've had the information for a week or two, so I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council. Thank you for, uh...
Yeah, I got my microphone.
That mic is on. Uh, thank you for having us back. A pleasure to see, um, familiar faces, and, and congratulations to those that will be coming on board. We look forward to continuing to work with you all, um, in the future as well. My name is Henry Graham. I'm here on behalf of Graham &amp; Company. Uh, tonight, we're going to serve as the developers of this project, and with me is also John Mallon from Motion Industries.
Yes, good evening. My name's John Mallon from Motion Industries. Uh, this is an exciting project for us, and we're really doing this as an extension on our corporate campus and to bring a truly world-class shop facility, uh, into Birmingham, in Arndale.
Just to, um, remind folks, um, what we are intending to do, as John mentioned, this will be almost an extension of their campus, uh, on roughly seven acres of land at the intersection of the Fifth and Twenty-Eight, uh, on the side of the old publishing warehouse, uh, off of, uh, Seventy-Eight down below, the, the AAA mini storage. There was a previous warehouse there, roughly around a hundred thousand square feet. This shop facility would, would be, um, to protect the same building footprint, a hundred and four thousand square feet, um, divided up into two different components of Motion's business. Their hose and rubber, uh, shop, as well as their fluid power shop, uh, so, uh, employees would park along the front. All of the dock access and/or access into the shop will be off of the western, uh, or the dock wall. The project's about a, a nine million dollar development, and then Motion is going to be investing upwards of two and a half million dollars, uh, into the new facility, uh, which will be crane-served, um, and, uh, this site, um, we sort of, uh, have been toying around with the idea of, of building here, and we couldn't think of a better, uh, group than Motion, uh, to extend their campus in Arndale. Uh, we know that, uh, they are bringing in folks from out of town and, and will oftentimes be able to host meetings at their headquarters and then be able to jump in the car and then, you know, less than a minute or two, tour them at this new world-class facility, so, uh, we appreciate your consideration of the abatements that are on the docket. Matt or John, you want to add into that?
I'll, I'll jump in. Thank you so much. My name's Matt Kinshaw with Bradley. I'm here representing the project, and I'll just add to it was, I already mentioned that this job, this project is expected to protect forty jobs that are already in the city of Arndale and result in the relocation of thirteen employees from outside the city of Arndale to the city, and then the creation of fifteen totally new jobs, and all of those jobs earning over seventy thousand dollars on average, so that these are really good jobs. Me, working with Mark Brown and the BBA in the back, his excellent team, we've estimated that this project will generate more than four hundred thousand dollars in new tax revenue, uh, to the city of Arndale, and we're requesting from the council an abatement of property taxes for five years and then the sales and use tax, and we've estimated that would be about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of abated taxes, so this is a pretty good return on investment for the city, almost double. Um, so I think this project, uh, is a great project for the city of Arndale, creating great jobs and generating a great return on investment in the form of new tax revenue.
Thank you. Very well said, Matt. Thank you. Um, questions for the council members? For the gentlemen, John, do you have anything to say?
Just five years, five years, right?
Five years on the annual warum. Derek?
Yeah, I've got, uh, a couple of questions. Uh, you start with the seat clerk, James. Resolution 2020 R.47, uh, that was emailed to me. I cannot download it. Do we have a copy of that? I have no idea what it says.
That's the file, correct? No, it was a, it was a PDF file that contains about eight...
But it's wanting me to download a Adobe file to open it with a Adobe reader.
Why is it just Adobe now? God, I have a hair.
Okay.
We all talk here pretty clean, because we have already gone over, we have to agree.
Uh, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem with how we would have...
Terry's got floor. Do you want me to come back?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Bob Joe?
He said five years after warum, and how, how many years sales?
The sales and use tax is purely just, just during the construction of the project. That's on just on, you know, things like, um, rebar, concrete, structural steel, that would be, and, and, you know, the abatement of, of sales taxes that would be generated by business.
Steve?
That's right. Mr. President, you did a good job.
Perfect. And, uh, nothing has changed. My, my only question is, nothing has changed since it came up originally, straight down the line like it was with the last meeting where this was proposed, right?
Yes, that is accurate.
All right. Uh, Terry?
Yeah, uh, I see the annual warum tax comes out to seventy-two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. The, uh, hundred and sixty-six thousand is sales tax. What percentage of the, uh, sales tax is that?
That, that is the educational, the non-educational taxes abated, the education...
The non-what?
Non-educational taxes abated in the education...
Okay, all of it, a hundred percent of the city tax?
That's correct.
What about, what about state, is that included?
The state is included.
Okay. All right, my questions, thank you.
All right. No further questions, we'll move on to the next, uh, next item. Thanks, officer.
President, I'm item number two. For the purpose of tonight, on the, uh, replacement, we will actually be replacing on that particular resolution to replace the term that has been, uh, vacated by Mr. Quayle, and it would should read that it will be till March fifteenth of twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, item number two and three, be postponed till the new council takes seat.
Second. John, Steve, motion on floor? Off the rope? Off the rope?
So we're not actually to a point?
I know, we're not there yet. Yeah.
We have a motion on the floor.
I do have a motion on the floor. Uh, so it's got a first and a second. Does any, is anybody making an additional recommendation that these, uh, two items, um, should not be on the agenda for this evening?
No, and we have basically made an indication to the CDA that we will get these approved tonight.
I agree. There was, we, we did, we did say two weeks. We can give them two weeks. We've had the recommendations.
Because these people are not going to change, and the CDA is right in the middle of a lot of activity, and they're short two weeks.
Well, this will sort itself out when we go to approve the agenda. All right? So, John, we got a motion...
You got a motion and a second. We got to take calls for a brother.
All right. John, what's your input? Are you in or down?
Yeah.
You're in as well? Steve?
That would be a no.
That would be a no as well. Okay. You forgot Wilson.
In beard.
In beard. I thought, oh, I'm sorry, Bob Joe, I thought I heard you, you mentioned a second. Which I get...
I'll, I'll, I'll...
Okay, gotcha. All right, so, making a motion, I guess, to, to remove item two and three from the agenda. Sorry, I've never been to this process before.
No, you did.
Yeah? So we have...
Not, not remove, postpone for the regular council meetings.
Okay. So, so go ahead with that vote. There's a motion on the floor. Who's sponsoring that?
Hold in favor, hold again.
Yeah, okay.
So, you want to call for the vote?
Let's roll call, John?
Yeah.
Your yes as well? Bob Joe, your yes. I'm a no, and Steve is a no. Okay. Uh, item number four, um, changes the organizational meeting venue for the new city council, Arndale City Hall, to Shades Valley High School auditorium on Monday, November the second, at 6:00 P. M. Any questions or comments on that? I know I just want to, when, James, I know when I talk to you about this, I really want to applaud your, your, um, your incitlness on relocating the venue, uh, knowing how many people tend to attend that meeting, and then giving us the ability to have all of our friends and, and family in there and still maintain social distancing. I really want to applaud you for, for bringing that forward. Any other comments on that item?
Is that something we can do on consent?
Yes.
On consent, yes.
And then, finally, item number five, that extends the financial budget for, uh, 2020 through December of 2020. I'm on the balance of consent.
Consent also. Can we do that on consent? Is that okay, do it on consent?
Sure.
Okay. Just extending the budget till the end of the year.
We would have one item, add tonight for present's priority, we have a resolution 2018 R.29, which originally voted Victor Childers to his term on the CDA. Uh, the date on that needs to be amended to show us till 3/15/22, not 3/15/21, and we can amend under state...
Resolution number, resolution number twenty-nine?
2018 R.29.
Okay, so you're talking...
It's a bold one.
Okay, I was...
And, uh, in reviewing some, uh, past minutes, Mr. Quayle pointed that out, and we just need to amend that to make it align with what it should have been, should have been for a four-year term.
So that would technically be a, a seventh item then, for talking about, okay?
That would, that would go along with item two, I'm very big on the thumb.
And what we, what we can do is go ahead and, and name this resolution fifty-three, but this resolution amends that resolution.
Okay.
Instead of trying to amend that resolution that's already down the block, so I'll just say resolution 2020 dash R.53, amends that resolution that you just...
Fifty-two would be made.
Would be fifty-two.
Fifty-two was changed in the council meeting.
Fifty-two was changed in the council meeting, uh...
Right, so it's fifty-three.
Okay. And what, what is it we're doing with this?
It's amending a resolution, uh, that had an incorrect date, uh, for one of the CDA members, so it's correcting the date for their term to serve.
Okay, and it's 2020 dash fifty-three. And I'm sorry, Steve, or, uh, Mr. Stewart, can you run it by me one more time? I'm just trying to type it in.
Mr. Quayle, would you like to, as a representative of the CDA, just mention what we're talking about?
Yeah, just...
Steve, would you see the resolutions, so I can read it on the resolution board?
And, uh, resolution number one?
So it'll be resolution, resolve their resolution 2020 dash R.53, amends resolution twenty, uh, 2018 dash R.29, uh, to correct the term of Victor Childers to 3/15/2022.
From the CDA, see? And we need to finish that tonight, because this was done by this council, Council Burden, so we need to make the correction.
All right. So item, item number six, before we get to that one, item number six would be, uh, choosing November the fourth, which is a Wednesday, as our first business meeting for the new administration. Is that something we can do on consent?
Yeah.
Agreed.
Perfect. And then, getting back to item, uh, number seven, uh, is that something that we can do on consent?
Yeah.
So, the term is 3/15/2022, correct?
Right. So...
Okay. So right now, I have item number four, five, six, and seven on consent. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, sir? I can't hear you from down there.
Did you want to do my number, sir?
I'm fine with number one on consent. Thank you. You're good?
I'm very good.
Okay. All right, so we have one, four, five, six, and seven on consent. Does everybody agree?
Mm-hmm.
All right, perfect. Uh, so, uh, with the prior vote and the items that have been, uh, selected to be put on consent, would someone like to make a, um...
I'll make a motion, the agenda be approved, with items one, four, five, six, and seven be on consent, and two or three postponed to the next regular council meeting.
Second. Fall in favor? I'm opposed. All right.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
The agenda appears as is. Um, lastly, I would like to hear any, this is the time for public comments, to the council on agenda items.
How are y'all getting through?
Uh, Ron, nine forty-four, hating post light. Uh, the event Monday, uh, at Shade Valley, uh, it has, uh, just a swearing-in ceremony. Uh, would we be able to get access to their internet or stream that to the public?
Uh, I can ask the principal, but I don't see that would be a problem.
Cool, cool. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I'll show it, and we can stream it to anybody that can lay down there.
Okay. Okay.
that takes the chair then, then they will decide when their regular meetings will be thereafter. It can be, they can change it to any night of the week, or any night of the month. That's all taken care of in the organizational meeting on first Monday of November.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. Any other comments on agenda items? All right, moving on. And then, with the agenda approved and all items being sent, I would say it's time to take any public comments to the council in general. Fair enough.
Everybody's motion over here, just a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hold my mic, please.